I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, July 22, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken?
It has. All are present tonight.
For proclamations and presentations, we are introducing IT specialist Travis Welsh and Parks and Grounds Logan Schaefer.
Chris Saladin is going to introduce Travis first. You can come forward to Travis.
This is Travis Welsh. He is our new IT specialist and began with us on July 8. Travis comes to us from CMU's help desk and he's also a recent CMU graduate. So very excited to have him with his combination of education and work experience.
Nice to meet you.
And then Chris Bundy is going to introduce Logan Schaefer for us.
I wrote this down. It was so special. I'm pleased to announce Mr. Logan Schaefer is joining the Parks and Public Spaces Department. He started on June 23. Logan's a graduate of CMU with a degree in Parks and Recreation. He's worked with our department as a seasonal employee while earning his degree, so he's familiar with many of the city parks and operations. Logan also worked maintenance at CMU and supervised fellow students in the completion of projects around campus. Logan grew up in Shepherd and assisted with his family's business most of his life. His mother owned Jenny's Diner in Shepherd and now Jenny's Catering Service. Join me in welcoming Logan Schaefer, one of our newest city employees, and wishing him much success in the Parks Department.
Logan, your aunt was my babysitter. Yeah, Betsy.
Thank you both for your service to the city.
Mayor, I would just mention you'll notice both of them are CMU grads, so as we talk about trying to retain more of our CMU graduates, we're trying to do our part in that process.
Good job.
Do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
May I add to that? Fire up chips.
Seeing no additions or deletions, we will now open the first public input. If you have any public comment on any agenda items tonight, this is the time to come to the podium. You will have five minutes. You can state your name and your address, and I will now open that. Seeing no one come forward for public comment, I will now close the public comment section. We have a receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Ridley?
Yes, under this section tonight, you have the report on the pending items, including the information that was requested regarding the sale, the property sales in the principal shopping district. You have the June minutes of the Airport Advisory Board, the June minutes of the Planning Commission, and a second quarter investment report. And then on the dais this evening, you have a communication that I believe all of you received via email today, but we gave you printed copies so it could be officially made a part of the record. And the communication is from Doug LaBelle, pointing out some concerns he and some other individuals in the community have with our residential zoning standards. And I would point out that one of the items mentioned was the glazing on new properties, which the individual indicated they thought that had been addressed and that had in fact been addressed last summer. And then two of the other items had to do with roof pitches and the widths of driveways. And both of those items are scheduled already to go before the Planning Commission at their August meeting, where they will see some proposed language to change those provisions. And they will likely be setting a public hearing on those two items in August.
Thank you. We now have our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are items on the agenda that have an asterisk next to them. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? Vice Mayor Gillis.
Number nine and 10, please.
Any other items? Seeing none, Manager Ridley, would you like to go through the remaining consent calendar items?
Yes, the items we're recommending are the approval of the minutes of both the regular meeting and the closed session from July 8. We have two bids to recommend for awards tonight. The first is for an articulated wheel loader. And this is the second piece of equipment, which was recommended when we had the discussions regarding the sidewalk snow removal and the expansion of more miles by city staff. You'll recall, we recommended a different piece of equipment as the second piece, so that we could evaluate the advantages and disadvantages of each type of equipment, so that if expansion does occur beyond the 25 miles, we would be better poised to make a recommendation on what the best piece would be. So tonight, we're recommending the only bid that was received, but it meets all of the bid specifications. And it's a purchase from Fredrickson Supply for $82,143 and the appropriate budget amendment. And I would remind you, as we told you two weeks ago, we received an insurance reimbursement for the machine that was damaged earlier this year, so that will be adequate to cover this purchase. The second bid is for two dump trucks that are scheduled for replacement this year, and we're recommending the purchase through the My Deal program through the state of Michigan, which is based on a statewide bid process. So we're recommending the purchase from Napa Heidi Truck for a total cost of $98,068 and the appropriate budget amendment. The other item we have on the consent calendar is a resolution for approval of submitting a grant request to the Michigan Arts Council. As you know, we've worked with Art Reach since 2013 for the painting of the Intersections Downtown. And the Michigan Arts Council has a grant available that will help offset some of those supply costs. We received it for this year, and we're applying to receive it again for 2020, so we recommend you approve the resolution as presented. And then we have approval of payrolls and warrants.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Commissioner Tolles.
I think we need to make a correction there on the motor pool trucks. Those are being purchased from Jorgensen Ford, and the dump bodies are Napa Heidi Truck equipment.
Thank you for that correction. I apologize.
No problem.
I still need a second for Commissioner Lallone.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar items, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next on our agenda is item number nine, which is consider a resolution to create the neighborhood enterprise zone and set a public hearing for August 12.
Yes, both of these items are related to the 410 West Broadway project, which was discussed at your, both your last meeting and the work session before that, so I won't go into all of the details related to that project. But you'll recall that the purchase agreement included a commitment for approval of two tax abatements related to the project. And the state law requires that for both of those abatements, that we first create a district, and then after the district is created, then the application from the purchaser or owner of the property can submit their individual application. So the first one for the neighborhood enterprise zone applies to new construction that's in a mixed-use building, available for lease, and is in a principal shopping district. And we're recommending one parcel of land for that district, which would be the 410 West Broadway site. It would be, allow for applications for 50% tax abatement for up to 15 years. And all you're doing this evening is approving the resolution, which indicates a notice of intent to create the district and setting a public hearing for August 12.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to approve the resolution and set the public hearing.
Commissioner Ling.
Second.
Discussion. Vice Mayor Gillis.
Can you give me an estimate of how much staff time will be into this specific resolution or application for this?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Just concerned that we are taking our staff time to create enterprise zone, and would just like to know what, how much of our time, since we try to allocate staff time to charges or fees when we do that. And so I'm concerned that how much we will be paying to create this zone so that 410 can get a tax abatement.
Any other discussion? I would just remind the commission that if we have specific questions, to submit them before the meeting and gives staff ample time to answer those type of questions. Any other discussion? All those in favor of setting the public hearing, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed?
Opposed.
That motion passes 5 to 2.
Got it.
Item number 10 is to consider a resolution to create a commercial redevelopment district and set a public hearing for August 12.
This is the same thing. It's recommending the district first before the actual application can be created. And the application of this law applies to a mixed-use building with high-density residential that, again, is in a principal shopping district. Again, we're recommending just the one parcel, allows for tax abatement of 50% for up to only 12 years in this case. And tonight, again, you're approving the resolution, indicating a notice of intent and setting a public hearing for August 12.
Commissioner Kulik.
Approve the resolution and set the public hearing.
Commissioner Lallone.
Second.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
Same comments apply. I know with every service that we give here in Mount Pleasant, our staff's time are allocated to those fees, so that we don't subsidize water, we don't subsidize garbage pickup, we don't subsidize recycling, and we attribute staff time to some of those charges. So, again, we are filling out a tax abatement for 410 West Broadway and Michigan Community Capital with staff time, creating these different districts so they can get these abatements. And I think they should be allocated staff time and have to pay for our staff time to do that, so I'll be voting no.
Commissioner Kulik.
The funds that were just mentioned, the solid waste, the water, and the sewer funds are all enterprise funds, and those are governed by different accounting rules and regulations. And they're, the water fund and the sewer fund specifically have ordinance language that prevent giving that service to anybody without a fee.
Vice Mayor Gillis.
Well, there is brush pickup, and there's peak program, and there's our softball tournaments and youth, youth athletes. And we, and there's even inspections, building inspections that we make everyone pay for and the staff time. So there's lots of other examples I could give, but thank you.
I think there's a distinct difference there. Those are services that we provide to citizens, either on an individual or group basis. This is actually, the city is the applicants for these. And we are the benefactor of those, so it's different by definition and philosophy, so... All those in favor of approving the resolution and setting the public hearing, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed the same.
Nay.
Aye.
That motion passes 5 to 2. Item number 11 is the receipt of the three-hour parking enforcement options from our Director of Public Safety, Paul Loria. Manager Ridley?
Yes, as you know, the Court of Appeals had a ruling earlier this year that determined the chalking of tires was not an appropriate method for parking enforcement. So we suspended our practice of doing that in the downtown area in April. And since that time, we've been researching what other options might be available for parking enforcement. And we've identified for you six potential options that we've been able to identify in our research thus far. And before we spent more time on it, we thought we should bring it to you, because what we were finding is that they fall into two basic categories. One category that would allow the continuation of free parking for a certain period of time, and then another category that would require some payment of parking for parking, which we have not done in the downtown area since 1977. So we thought before we did some further vetting of that, it might be important to obtain some general direction on your desires and/or what additional information or other input you might need from downtown property owners or businesses to maybe further define that a bit more, to narrow down our options before we spend too much time on it. So we didn't put this as an action item tonight, because it's a lot to absorb and it's really a big decision, but we wanted to at least have you thinking about it. And if you could at some point give us some direction about which of those categories you want us to pursue, or what additional information you might want before you even make that initial determination, that would be helpful for us.
Is there any members who have questions that we'd like to direct staff to investigate?
Just one question. Do we have any idea of what other comparable-sized cities are doing?
The research that we've done, they're investigating these same kinds of options or they're, many of them have moved to the pay parking as well. So again, it's, they've looked at these same kinds of things. We expect the technology will continue to evolve, because this is only a couple months old, but as of this point in time, everybody else is looking at basically the same options we are.
I remember when we had meters that there was a reliability problem with the meters that we had. People would complain, I was only in there for 15 minutes and I had an hour on the time and it was gone. And in those days, it was real simple. You'd take the meter head off, stick a new one on there, take it down to City Hall, stick some quarters in it and time it, see how long it really lasted. Pretty simple system. I know at the end, when we finally got rid of the last of our meters, they were getting real expensive to replace. And then you've got the problem of collecting the money out of them and, and I don't know.
I should mention, we took the liberty of not pursuing that as an option because of the large capital investment and the ongoing maintenance to it, so that's not one of the ones we've really further investigated, because we did not feel it worked well.
Commissioner Ling.
Is this proposal going to go to the downtown committees for their input? I had the impression that it was, and then I just wasn't sure. So is this going to be run by them?
We weren't planning to take it to the downtown boards, because we really tried to clarify what their roles were and make them very specific. So any outreach we were going to do was going to be more of a broad-based outreach, if you wanted us to collect that once we had it narrowed down.
Well, I know for me, in looking over them, and I could see some of the difficulty in operationalizing some of them, but from, in general, my initial feeling is I don't want to go to a paid parking. I'd like us to come up with something that allows us to continue the three-hour, if possible. I just think the implications for downtown, there's a lot of significant implications for downtown if we suddenly switch from what's been in place since 1977 to paid parking. So if we can come up with a system that allows us to, in a different way, continue to do what we've basically been doing, that would be my preference. I could see, in looking at the pros and cons, I could see where there could be some difficulties. I guess I have one further question. I mean, I'm a big, you know, civil liberties guy and all, but I'm going to have to say, I couldn't believe that decision. And I, and was it a Court of Appeals decision?
Yes, it was.
I, and it was, and it was federal, right? I mean, this was a, and so it's a whole country that potentially, well, all the states within that Court of Appeals district. I'm just wondering, I guess I'd like to do as, I don't know, as minimal as possible in terms of cost. I'm just wondering if maybe it'll get challenged somewhere at some point and looked at again, because it just seems to me it's a very close question about what actually constitutes an invasion, you know, a Fourth Amendment violation. And the difference between a chalk mark and a tire, whatever you call those things, just strikes me as not, or even, I don't know, I just found it a surprising decision. And so I wouldn't want us to be putting a huge amount of money and effort into it if we can come up with something. I guess the other thing I would say is, we are having this period of time where we're just allowing people to park. I don't, I don't want any, you know, staff time or anything put into trying to keep a record of it. But it would be interesting if we get, if we hear from the public or hear from the store owners about how it's working, or if there are complaints, or if some of the problems we've been concerned about happen or not during, since we sort of have a trial period of just allowing people to park, so... But I would personally like to see us keep at least the three-hour free parking.
Commissioner Kulik.
Yeah, the, parking is a never-ending headache for the downtown and it always will be. When, I've been spending a lot of time in Ann Arbor lately, and they've got that Pankow thing all around town, so it's, and we've got it down by campus and it seems to be working there. I didn't like the idea of the thing with the, with the valve stems on the tires, because that's sort of unproven technology, and I could just see that getting challenged real quick. The other one that I thought had merit was the one where they're taking pictures of the license plates and it, that I think is more mainstream technology and, and so, of course, there's a, what was it, $20,000 front cost on that one, but I don't know, it's, if we procrastinate long enough, it'll be the new commissioner's job to figure this out in January.
How long do you want to wait?
At least the two of us will be free.
Commissioner Tolles.
First of all, that decision was a Supreme Court decision, and I don't think that's going to be overturned too soon.
Was it a Supreme Court decision?
Yes, it was.
Oh, I didn't think it had gone that far.
Also, we had parking meters before, and we got rid of the parking meters, as all businesspeople are assessed on a footage basis, like my building is. It's close to $1,000 a year to provide free parking for patrons. We had parking meters at one time at CMU, not CMU, but SBX in that area, and we gave that away, because it was costing too much. The meters were bringing in $24,000, and the cost to have a person go out and empty those on a weekend and stuff was costly prohibitive. It's very simple. The only thing, you're hiring an enforcement officer to go out and write tickets if somebody's parked three hours or over. I think it's just a waste of time. You got free parking, I think most people adhere to that for what it's going to cost to sit there and force it. I just don't think it's worth it. It's just a waste of time.
Well, is there any other items that you need?
Well, as I indicated, we weren't expecting any specific direction tonight, because it's kind of a big issue, so I guess I would like each of you to think about it, and if there's additional information you need before we go to the next step, please let us know.
Okay. All right. Next on our agenda is item number 13, which is to consider final confirmation of allocation of funds toward the joint inter-local pathways connector.
Yes, city representatives have been meeting with representatives from the Charter Township of Union, Central Michigan University, the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe, Mid-Michigan Pathways, and the Isabella County Road Commission to discuss pathway options between Deerfield Road and Broome Field Road. And the preferred for the, as the group met over the time period, the safest method and the most cost-effective method was deemed to complete the pathway through the CMU-owned land, as most of the pathway already exists through there. So the map provided shows you that there's one gap in the area in the middle of it, and then there's one preferred shortcut area. And so the group has been focusing on identifying funding sources for the gap area first, and that gap area is between Dennison Drive up West Campus Drive to just north of the Tennyson Baseball Stadium. So tribal 2% funds have been received for that portion of the project. Union Township has committed funds toward it, and CMU has committed funds for the project engineering, the administration, and the construction management, and has also committed to maintain both the pathway and the lights once they're constructed. Our approved budget has $25,000 allocated for this year's budget, but we had committed that we would not formally commit those funds until we brought it back to you with an indication as to the other funding sources. So tonight, we're recommending that you officially confirm the commitment and authorize us to finalize any interlocal governmental agreements that are needed with the township and CMU to get that gap area constructed. I think this is a great example of four entities working together to deal with a safety problem in the most cost-effective method that we could find.
Commissioner Kulik.
Move to formally commit $25,000 toward the interlocal pathway connector project Area B and authorize the city manager to finalize partnership agreements with the Charter Township of Union on this project and CMU if needed.
Commissioner Ling.
Second.
Discussion. Vice Mayor Gillis.
In the write-up for Area B, the cost, estimated cost is $260,000, yet the contributions between $60,000 from Union, $150,000 from the 2%, $39,000 from CMU, and $25,000 for us comes out to about $274,000, more than the estimated cost. So I'm just wondering about that number of why they're collecting more money than what's estimated cost.
I think that estimated cost was from last year. Let me check real quick here. Sorry, I'm not readily finding it. Let me make sure I've got the right numbers, though. Because my understanding is that there's still a small amount that still needs to, yeah, yeah, that was the cost from last year. The current estimated cost is closer to $299,000. So that was my understanding, there's still a small gap of funding that's needed for it that the township is working with a couple other entities to raise that additional amount.
Okay, so there's going to be a shortfall of about $25,000 that, approximately, give or take or two.
Right, right now there is, but we won't start construction until that shortfall, or we won't authorize the agreements to start construction until that funding has been identified.
Do you have any concerns that they're going to be asking us for more money?
For this gap area, not at this point, I don't.
Okay. Because I would hate to commit $25,000 and then have them have the shortfall and come back and ask us to fill that gap, because they don't have all the funding sources already. We're already throwing in 25. I, if I understand it, the 2% request came from Union Township for the $150,000?
That's correct. They wrote the request.
And do other governments, can other governments put in requests for the same? And do other governments, can other governments put in, uh, requests for the same project or, why, why didn't we do that on a cooperative basis? I, I know the tribe, uh, likes to see our two percent requests come from multiple government municipalities as collaboratives.
We did support the request.
Okay. But we weren't on the request, it was just from Union.
Correct.
Okay. Um, I'm, would like to see this gap, uh, taken care of, uh, just to give an alternative to the students. I am concerned that this twenty-five thousand dollars that we're contributing is going to turn into fifty thousand because of the twenty-five thousand dollar gap. So, um, I'll be supporting it this time, but if it does come to the dais again for us to be pitching in some more money, I probably will not be as, as supportive. I was hoping that Union Township could find a way to get enough money without asking for more, but with the twenty-five thousand dollar gap, and are they planning on constructing this this year or is, if it's next year, I'm sure the price is gonna go up more than two-hundred-and-ninety-nine?
Um, that hasn't been determined yet because it's gonna, two things are gonna factor into that. One is when we have all the funding sources identified and also CMU is looking to see if they can tag this project onto any other projects that they have coming up, either yet this fall or next year, to hopefully, um, get some economies of scale with it. Um, so we're evaluating, or they're evaluating those options before any decision has been made about actual construction timeline.
So they don't even plan on starting it this year?
Well, they may, if we can, if they can tag it onto a project and we get the funding, it could happen yet this fall.
And the bids have to come in appropriately, right?
Commissioner Ling.
Um, I'm very glad to see this project going forward. Um, it's, I, I know it's been in the works for at least three years, maybe four years, it's, it's been a long time coming. It was, the, the request to develop some kind of a pathway, um, came, um, from a, a number of, um, places, but primarily from the students, um, at Central who were concerned about the death that occurred on Crawford. And having this pathway was one of their, the primary goals that they had. So I'm, and, and, uh, I, I was part of the committee that looked at the various ways in which we, the best way and best location for a pathway and students were also involved in looking at the two options. One was, uh, doing it on Crawford and one was the, taking advantage of the pathway that was already there and, and the students were also involved in doing some surveys to see if it was likely to be used. So I know that this is a very important, um, project, uh, from, um, the CMU students' point of view, um, and I think that this was a good solution for it. As I indicated in the note I sent this morning, I'm very anxious, if at all possible, and as soon as possible, that the area A also be included in it because I just think it's, I, I think that even with the area B, there is a lighted sa- safe way to get to Deerfield. I think it is much more likely to be used on a regular basis if that little gap, um, is filled in. I drove by there today and the difference between, you practically can throw a stone across the gap to, to get to Deerfield, uh, as opposed to now, you do have to go down ways and up ways and then come back. And it's safe, but it is, it is quite a bit longer. So I would hope, um, that as soon as we're able to complete this, that we will then start looking at what would be, what it would take in order to be able to complete the, the less expensive, um, part of it. But thank you for the, continuing to, to work on this. As I said, it's been a long time coming and I think it's definitely worth doing.
I've got one more question. Vice Mayor Gillis.
Central Michigan University, it says under their allocation of thirty-nine thousand, it's for project engineering, administration, and construction management. Is that through the school or someone that they're going to be hiring to do that?
Um, I don't know.
Okay. I didn't know if that was actual cash or it's like their, their services amounted to thirty-nine thousand?
Um, I know that initially they had some of their own, um, engineering staff working on it, but I'm not sure if that's still the case or if they have any of that contracted out at this point. Um, my guess would be part of the administration and construction management may be dependent on whether they're able to tag it onto another project or not.
I, I would like to echo some comments tonight. Um, this is a project that has, uh, been in the works for several years and, uh, I'm really happy to see that it's moving forward and it is a real collaboration between us, the Saginaw Indian Chippewa Tribe, CMU, and, uh, Union Township. Uh, and as Commissioner Ling noted earlier, um, I'd really like to see segment A also, um, be completed and eventually down the road, um, I think it's a need that everyone has recognized, but we need a walkway down Crawford Road. That's really where the tragedy happened and that spurred all of this, but eventually, um, all four entities, um, need to get together and we need to find the money and the way to really make Crawford Road safe. And I know that the Charter, Charter, Union Township has, um, made commitments in the last year or two to provide more walkability and sidewalks, um, in their, in their jurisdiction and that is one area where I think, I know they've paid some particular attention to and so I look forward to the future when we can complete that project as well. Um, and for today, uh, I'm just happy that we're completing this part as well, so. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving, uh, the budget amendment and approving Nancy's, um, to take care of the further agreements that are necessary, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed, the same. Uh, the mash, motion passes seven-zero. Um, next on our agenda is announcements on city-related issues and new business. Does anybody have any new business?
Commissioner Tolles.
Uh, I wanna thank staff for getting me the assessor's worksheet here and I have a couple quick comments. Uh, if everybody would like to look at their packet there, you look at parcel seventeen zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-four-six-nine, three-hundred West Michigan Street and three-oh-four to three-ten, it was sold in five-four of two thousand sixteen. Sale price was one million three-hundred-and-fifty thousand. When you look at, over at the price that it was bought, uh, the assessor left out three-eleven Broadway Street, which is right across the street here, which the tax ID number on that was seventeen zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-four-seven-three-zero-zero. So that comp is not correct, for one thing. Another comp that was left out is La- La Crosse Building that's across the street that sold on seven-seventeen of two thousand eighteen for thirty-one thousand six forty-one. That tax ID is seventeen zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-four-seven-two-zero-zero. Uh, the assessed valuation of that, uh, was seventy thousand on the one parcel, it's actually two parcels, and the other one is seventeen-eight, which had assessor's evaluation of one-seventy-five-six-thousand, six-hundred, one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-six-hundred. Uh, as I say again, that piece sold for thirty-one-six forty-one. That piece was offered to the city for twenty-seven thousand a while ago and the city turned it down, so I don't know how all of a sudden it's worth one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-six-hundred, uh, which is ridiculous. Another comment was, uh, on one-twenty South Main. Uh, that's the, one of the parcels I was talking about that went through the divorce on five-twenty-five-sixteen for two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand, uh, which is back up for sale now with two other parcels that the people that are going through a divorce are trying to sell right now. We'll see how fast those sell. Also, two-eleven, excuse me, two-twenty-one West Michigan, uh, was sold on four-twenty-eighteen and the assessor here has questioned on the market sale. It sold for a hundred-and-forty-nine-nine. That was a building and a property and there's a notation, purchased just for land, knocking building down. It doesn't ma- make a difference. It was on the market for sale, that's the market price that it bought, and I think he excluded the sale. The only other sale that was in, uh, two thousand nineteen, uh, was one-oh-two South Main, one-oh-four and one-oh-five, and, uh, I believe that deals with Mercantile Bank and it was on a memorandum of a land contract and I don't know the terms on that. Uh, but I'm saying, well, these mistakes on here, these figures are not correct. So your assessor used these market prices here and has reassessed downtown and claims everything's gone from twelve to twenty percent. And I, I don't see how that has happened with these mistakes that are on there. Uh, you have three-quarters of a block that he missed a total building on, you have another sale that he doesn't even have on here and I, and I don't know why it was on there because the, uh, fair market sale price of the building is too low, so he doesn't wanna factor that There's a lot of questions, you know, that I have on this, uh, that just don't make sense. And, and you can't tell me everything's going up. If you look at three-oh-nine West Michigan Street, uh, that was purchased to put, uh, one of the licensees of the marijuana in there. Uh, they had that at fourteen-three, which was twenty-eight-six and it sold for twenty-eight thousand dollars. So I don't see where this big twelve to twenty percent increase has happened downtown. Thank you.
Could we have the assessor review these comments from Commissioner Tolles and, or even join us, uh, maybe for a work session, um, or try to give us some background on where these figures came from, the ones in question?
Is that the desire of the commission, to have a work session on it?
Commissioner Ling.
Um, I wouldn't, I'm, really would not be interested in having a, a work session at this time. I, I think, um, in the information that we got, it made it clear that, uh, the commission itself doesn't, the state law, uh, determines the, the way in which, what the assessing standards are, um, and that, um, the kinds of sales that can be included are, are pretty much determined by the standards that are set, um, by the, uh, at the, at the state level. Um, I, I think it's difficult for us to look, I don't question anything that, that Commissioner Tolles said. He's, lives downtown, is very familiar, has a building downtown, is very familiar with the sales, but I do know from my time when I was on the, the board of review, um, there's a real process involved in deciding what in fact is a clean, um, um, arms length, is that the term, um, uh, sale? So that it is a typical sale, a willing seller and a willing buyer, not within the family, not a distressed sale, that there's lots of factors that go into determining what property should be included and what property shouldn't be included. Uh, did, did we have a lot of appeals from downtown, um, after, after the property taxes went out?
I met certain.
Yeah, I'm not, I, if, if we had a lot of appeals that were going to the state tax commission and we were being overturned on a regular basis, then I think we might need to say to ourselves, is there an issue here that we need to be concerned about? But I'm not aware of that being the case, so, um, at this point, although I, I certainly think that looking at what's happening and making sure that we feel confident about what's happening is important, at this point, I'm fairly confident in the work that's being done by, uh, the assessor. I think that it would be good if he looks at the comments, uh, that were made and if there's anything that he thinks that we need to know, uh, that would be helpful. But for me, um, I'm comfortable right now with the work being done by the assessor.
Commissioner Tolles.
One quick comment. I don't think you saw too many people, uh, that, uh, went to the tax tribunal. I've been there eight, nine times and won eight out of nine times. But if this information is incorrect, how can the assessor say this is a fair assessment? You left out one building on this valuation that skews the whole thing. So how can you say this is correct? This is not good wor- work product. And if, if I knew this, I'd be challenging my building and I'd give it to everybody else downtown to challenge in the tax tribunal. And I think the city would be losing on it because it's not correct. And this is, from what I'm understanding, this is the market comps that he used. And they're not correct. I know you can come out with arm-length transaction, you can come out with distressed sale, those are just opinions, but these are figures and the figures are incorrect on that one thing. So that throws this all off and I don't think I'd have any problem going to tax tribunal winning on that, but this wasn't disclosed to the public. Public doesn't know about this. And they wouldn't know about it if I didn't bring it up and look at it and the figure's incorrect. How do you leave a whole building out of three-quarters of a block that's one parcel that includes two pieces of property and you left one piece out? It just doesn't make sense. Then you have the other building that I mentioned, La Crosse across the street, the city didn't wanna buy it for twenty-seven thousand, now you're saying it's worth one-seventy-five-six? How does that work?
Commissioner Lalum.
I don't think we need a work session about it, but I think it would be good to have Commissioner Tolles's questions answered and we can get, probably get that information by email. I don't think we need a work session, I don't, unless it's, he finds out that it's like, wow, we've made a really big mistake.
Commissioner Kulik.
Um, I agree, we don't need a work session, uh, rather than have it be responded to by an email for the sake of transparency, I think it should be presented to the dais so John Q. Public can know about it.
I'd, I agree, I, I think a work session is inappropriate at this time. The assessor in his comments, uh, did invite any person of the public or obviously any commissioner, if they have, you know, questions, to contact him. Um, and I, I think that any, you know, investigation or questions answered should be presented to us in the packet, uh, at the dais, so it is part of the public record.
We can certainly answer the questions and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Cooky would also be happy to sit down with a subset of the city commission to talk through some of that if you wanna set that up too. Um, we could schedule a time to do that to have some dialogue on it, short of a work session. If, um, there's individuals that would like to do that, let me know and we can schedule
Vice Mayor Gillis.
I would like to invite the public to, uh, come out, uh, our community members on August twelfth. This will be our next city commission meeting for the public hearings on the fifty percent tax abatements and the two zones that will, uh, zone and district that we're creating for four-oh-one West Broadway. If you have any opinions on that, we will be losing one-point-one million dollars over the next fifteen years. Uh, well, we will be giving up one-point-one million dollars for the next fifteen years if these tax abatements are approved and these zones are approved. So we would really like to have your comments and your opinions on August twelfth, our next city commission meeting.
Any other new business? Commissioner Ling.
Um, I just want to, um, let the commissioners know that, um, the vis- we are part of a sister-city relationship with Okeechobee. This is our fifty-fourth year, um, of the relationship and the main part of that right now is a student exchange, where in one year, um, uh, seven or eight students from Mount Pleasant go to Okeechobee to, uh, visit and learn about that culture and on opposite years, a group from Okeechobee comes here. And this year, there will be a group of seven students and two chaperones coming from Okeechobee and they will be, uh, touring City Hall, they'll be getting to know about City Hall on August sixth. Um, they're gonna be here, um, to tour the building and to, um, meet people and have some snacks and, um, I'd like to invite anybody who happens to be around, um, on August sixth on a Tuesday, if you can come by and meet the students, I'm sure that they would appreciate that.
Also, on August fifth, uh, the new amphitheater that, uh, we got donations and grant money for, uh, we're having our, uh, grand opening ceremony, it'll be at, it was six o'clock, um, down in Island Park, there's gonna be a couple of bands, uh, and an opening ceremony and, um, it'd be a great event to kinda commemorate the beginning of that structure that's gonna hopefully bring a lot of, uh, public engagement and, um, good times to be had in the future, so come on out. It's obviously a free event and the more the merrier. Any other new business?
Okay.
One thing with the, um, pavilion that's gonna be opening, if, if parking is full in Island Park, there's plenty of- Island Park, there's plenty of parking behind City Hall, and you can walk across Yoke Street Bridge.
Right now.
It's a very nice walk.
Parking might be limited after 401 gets developed, because they're using the back for our, for their parking for tenants, but August, they might have some spots open.
This is the second option, or second availability for public comment. If you'd like to make public, public comment on any city-related business, anything that we discussed tonight, or that is coming up in the future, you have five minutes, you can come up to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name is Pierce Doherty, I'm from 206 South Second Street, Shepherd, Michigan. Question about the, the interlocal pathway connector, isn't that immediately through the smart zone that a CMU intends to put in? Wouldn't a larger commitment from a CMU be reasonable to ask in that sort of situation? I understand the necessity of the, the pathway, but as an avid bicyclist, I, I go through the pathway that also goes through the, the frisbee disc golf down there as well, and if they say they're going to keep it up, I mean, if you go down there, there's no upkeep going on down there, there's, the bridges are busted, the, the, there's, the cracks are abhorrent. I, I would just like to push for more commitment from CMU in that regard, if, if that's going to be the case, especially if they're going to be, start investing a lot of money in that area anyways, and it would just be, make a lot more sense instead of asking the city. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to give public comment tonight? Seeing no one come forward, I will now close tonight's public comment section. And we will now recess for our work session upstairs in Conference Room A on recreational marijuana, and the public is invited to join us.